Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome, as I call to order, the August 2024 meeting of the Escambia County School Board. Whether you're joining us via our live stream or in our audience, we do truly appreciate your interest in the education of the students of Escambia County. The mission of the Escambia County Public School is to provide equal access to quality public education that embraces the uniqueness and the potential of each student. We are united in this mission. At this time, I ask you to silence your cell phones or any other electronic device you have with you. As a reminder, there are now two public forum options. There will be, the first will be the public forum session for agenda items only. That means it appears on the form that you picked up at the back, at the rear of the room, or on the screen as you see it. And then, and that will come after our presentations. And then, the second public forum will be after the business meeting is completed. And that's the opportunity for anyone to come and speak about anything of concern about public education in this county. But it is not on the agenda. So if you wish to speak at either of those times, you must complete the appropriate form located on the table at the rear of the room and bring it forward to Ms. Harris here at the front table. There is a form, the blue form is the one if you're going to speak to an agenda item. The white paper is if you're going to speak at the public forum. And so I have a number of forms already, but just wanting to be sure you have got the right one. All speaker forums must be submitted prior to the start of the agenda public forum. So we'll go through all of the committee reports, special recognitions, the resolutions. And at that time, if you don't have a form submitted, it will be too late. Okay, so the meeting was properly advertised in the Pensacola News Journal, legal notice number 10378732. It's the tradition of the Escambia County School Board to begin our meeting with an inspirational message or a motivational moment, followed by the pledge of allegiance. This month, Mr. Paul Fetzko, our District Two representative, will lead us. Mr. Fetzko?
Actually, I've invited Pastor Marcel Davis, who is a longtime supporter of public education. He and his family have been involved in the Escambia County Schools for years and years. And he has devoted a great deal of time to helping students who live in his community and those who are in District Two. So Pastor Davis, if you'll come up and give us an invocation. And then, it will be followed by the pledge, which I will start.
Let us pray. Father, we do give you Thanksgiving praise tonight for every good and perfect gift. We want to ask our blessings tonight on every superintendent, every director, every administrator, and every teacher. We want to thank you for our students tonight, God, that they might receive wisdom, revelation, and knowledge from this body. And Father God, help us to unite ourselves. We're all a part of these stars and these stripes, and that's what make us great. We thank you now that every student will achieve by your power. And we pray right now that we have a successful school year. We thank you for the work of Ms. Patty Hightower and for Mr. Bill Slaton, God, for their service as they search on to do something else to help make the community better. This we ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you so much. At this time, we move to the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Superintendent, are there any additions or deletions to your recommended agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Under section sixteen, Consent, Curriculum, Student Services, Item B and Item C have been added. And then, under section two, excuse me, under section forty-two, Consent, Superintendent Other, Item C has been added. Those are the changes.
Thank you. State statutes and school board rules require that changes made to the agenda after publication be based on a finding of good cause determined by the person designated to preside over the meeting, as stated in the record. Does anyone on the board have any objections to the items that have been added? Well, I think we've all been given plenty of information about the things and know that it's in the best interest of the students for these things to be determined. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Madam Chairperson, I would like to move the adoption of the amended agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Slaton. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Is there any additional discussion? Please vote.
Prove five to zero.
Thank you. Moving into our committee and departmental reports, we will start with the PTA update. Miss Campbell? I know y'all have been working.
Good evening, Superintendent and School Board members. It's been a busy month since I last spoke with y'all, but y'all wouldn't know anything about that, would you? First, I would like to introduce the ECC PTA VP Samantha and Hospitality Chair, Dr. Laverne Robinson, who came with me tonight.
Welcome.
After our last report, a group of eight PTA leaders from Escambia County, which included three new local unit presidents, attended the Annual Florida PTA Leadership Convention, where we attended classes on all aspects of running a nonprofit and PTA best practices, listened to guest speakers such as National PTA's immediate past president Anna King, and networked with PTA leaders from throughout the state. We also participated in electing the twenty-four twenty-six Florida PTA Executive Committee. Additionally, we had a little fun with helping raise scholarship funds for Florida PTA. We came back charged to start the year, ready to train and assist all of our PTA leaders in Escambia County. In doing so, we have been helping local units with audits and other compliance items for nonprofits. And we have held Zoom and in-person training sessions to assist in helping our local units have a successful year. Our PTAs and PTSAs have started the year off strong, welcoming teachers and students back with special events and plans for student enrichment, family engagement, and community involvement. The PTA volunteers assisted at their school's orientation day, provided teacher appreciation breakfasts, breakfasts? Popsicles in the park for students and families, and are in the middle of planning carnivals and fund runs and so much more that our PTAs and PTSAs are doing for our children, families, and teachers. I hope you can get out to the schools during one of their events. We are excited to announce that Ransom Middle School PTSA was reinstated last night. There was a great response from parents, and five enthusiastic parents stepped up to volunteer to be officers. This PTSA has not been active for a few years, and so it's a pretty big deal that we got them up last night. So we're kind of proud about that. Also, Global Learning Academy PTA elected their officers yesterday, so they are now ready to be active for the year. We are grateful for Principal Marsh and Principal Pierce for their support to make both of these local units active this year. We are now at twenty-eight local units, and membership numbers have exceeded last year's at this time. PTA in Escambia County is growing. Our county council members have been busy in the community, such as helping with United Ways Stuff the Bus at area Walmarts, and attending community events such as League of Women Voters Candidate Forum. I meant to bring, where my little, I voted, I did vote today. We are also working on planning our annual Fall Leadership Training and Resource Fair, which will be held at Marcus Point Baptist Church on Saturday, October fifth. We hope you plan to join us there. Historically, the board members and superintendent attend. In closing, a little bit of history. On January twenty-fifth, nineteen twenty-five, Florida PTA chartered a county council in Escambia County. We are one of the oldest county councils in Florida and are celebrating one hundred years on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Please save the date to attend ECC PTA's one-hundredth year celebration on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. We'll have more information when it's closer to the event. Thank you so much for giving me a few minutes to speak on PTA.
Thank you, and great work and organizing, because we appreciate everything the parents do for our students at our schools.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Adams?
I do want to say, great job with the PTA at Buella Middle. I know they got their next meeting coming up, and they've taken off pretty good, so appreciate it. Frank Murphy is excited about it, Principal.
Those ladies have really taken off.
Yeah, they have. They have. That's good.
Thank you very much. Our next item is some special recognition. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Hightower. I'm excited for this. Michelle Hill is the program director from ABC Group. And Elizabeth Graham is the professional engineer from the Department of Transportation. Are you two ladies here, if you'll come right there to the podium? These two ladies were instrumental in providing an amazing opportunity for our high school juniors and seniors that participated in Northwest Florida Construction Career Day. I think a couple of you of our board members also participated. Ms. Hill and Ms. Graham are here to present scholarship awards to those students that were able to attend. Those scholarships range from two thousand dollars each, where I think it was, I'm reading here, twelve students received two thousand dollars each, and five students who will receive five hundred dollars each, for a total of twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. What a remarkable achievement. I want you to make certain that you introduce all the students, and then, once we have all the students along with yourself, we'd like for you to come up and greet the board. So I'm going to ask our board members and myself, we'll walk out right here, and then, if you'll start introducing them, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I say a few words?
Oh, no.
Okay. Well, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight in regards to Construction Career Days, what our goals are for the construction industry and how it relates to high school students in our local area. I want to personally thank all of you for the support that Escambia County gives in being able to provide positive impacts into our community. For those who aren't familiar with it, I'm guessing all of you are. Construction Career Days is a nationwide program that Florida DOT sponsors in partnership with members of the road and bridge construction and consulting industry, and is funded in part through the grants of the Federal Highway Administration. Our goal is pretty much to showcase the highway construction to students, juniors, and seniors. Our in-person event is held at the Santa Rosa County Fairgrounds. And students this year were from Escambia, Santa Rosa, Oklahoma City, and Walton Counties attended this April. The event is really different from traditional job fairs. Our goal is to provide a day full of diverse hands-on activities led by our industry experts to spark the students' interest in engineering and construction. We featured roughly thirty hands-on learning labs that taught them to, were able to talk about potential salaries they were able, and give the students an idea of what the construction industry offers. But by far, the most popular element of the CCD event is our equipment area. Hopefully, all of y'all got to experience that hands-on. We have a field full of equipment that students get to actually operate, get a feel for what it's like to operate heavy machinery. That kind of varies from asphalt pavers, being able to use an excavator, pick up basketballs and slam dunk it into the hoop, go up on bucket trucks, and then also, we have like a fabricated golf that they could do some little putt-putting from an excavator. We also provide an exhibit area where college, technical schools, and companies are hiring and can speak one-on-one with the students. Some companies even come with applications to hand on. We've actually been able to hire roughly three students straight out of, straight out of high school in the last two years. And then, of course, the Construction Career Days, just to add to what you had said. We actually, for the second year in a row, were able to provide fifty thousand dollars in scholarships. Seventeen, which will be presented here today, is Escambia County. So I would just want to say congratulations to the scholarship recipients, and best of luck to you, and then, we'll go ahead and announce their names. Absolutely. Thank you.
And of the seventeen, can you hear me? Okay. Yes. Of the seventeen recipients, we only had, I think there's only five. What about now? All right. So of the seventeen recipients, there's only five that were able to join us today, but I'm going to go through everybody that was awarded as well. We had Sarah Bailey, Kendall Beasley, Colton Criswell. We have Carson Dorch, Braden Glick. Braden's here as well. Ava Garganis, Jeremiah McCants, Amaria Shingles. Oh, and this is for you, Braden. Mandell Smith, and then Laura Stinson is here as well. Wen Tang, Jaden Ward, Cordell Autry. Gabriella Berkland, Abby Hardy, Darren Leatherberry. And Darren is here. And last but not least is Duffy Martin, who isn't here with us this evening, so congratulations, and I appreciate it.
Whereas children are Escambia County School District's most valuable resource, and their health is crucial to our country's economic development, continued success, and well-being as a whole. And whereas Northwest Florida reports an average of fifty local children are newly diagnosed with cancer each year. And whereas cancer is the number-one disease killer of children in the United States, yet childhood cancer research is severely underfunded, where less than ten percent of the National Institute of Health allocates cancer research funding to children. And whereas research in the field of childhood cancer will allow for better treatment options, safe, quality therapies, and ultimately, a cure for this deadly disease. And whereas Raleigh Foundation for Childhood Cancer Research has provided a valuable resource to children and families who are afflicted with this horrendous disease. Now therefore be it resolved that the Escambia County School District does hereby recognize the month of September twenty twenty-four as Child, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and encourages others to participate in efforts throughout the year to raise awareness and funding for childhood cancer research with the Raleigh Gulf Coast while shopping or while supporting families who face devastating effects and costs. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the regular meeting of said board, and that a copy be tendered to Raleigh Gulf Coast, adopted this twentieth day of August twenty twenty-four. Resolution, whereas the Escambia County Council of PTAs has a long tradition of seeking the highest possible educational advantages for all children and youth, so they can recognize their full potential. And whereas the Escambia County Council PTAs assists parents in developing the skills they need to nurture and protect their children, and encourages parent and public involvement in public schools in our community, and speaks on behalf of children and schools in the community, in organizational meetings, and before public governing bodies. And whereas during the month of September twenty twenty-four, special activities will be held to promote parent involvement, expand the membership of the Escambia County Council of PTAs, and broaden the PTA's base of support so it becomes a stronger and more effective voice for children in education. And whereas it is the role of the Escambia County Council of PTAs to encourage parent involvement by promoting an environment in which parents are valued as primary influences in their children's lives. And whereas for more than one hundred twenty-seven years, PTA has been a powerful voice for children, a relevant resource for parents, and a strong champion for public education committed to making sure parent participation in education is meaningful. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Escambia County, Florida, does hereby recognize the month of September twenty twenty-four as PTA Membership Month in the School District of Escambia County, Florida, and calls upon all families, schools, businesses, and communities to be our partners in announcing this resolution and to become active in participating this month. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the regular meeting of said board, and that a copy be tendered to Melanie Gamble, ECC PTA President, and Samantha Strickland, ECC PTA First Vice President, adopted this twentieth day of August twenty twenty-four. Final resolution, whereas the School Board of Escambia County recognizes that regular school attendance is essential for student success and recognize the importance of understanding students' challenges and barriers to school attendance. Whereas the nation is experiencing a school absenteeism crisis that has eroded positive conditions for learning at school, including physical and emotional health and safety, a sense of belonging, connection, and support. Whereas reducing chronic absenteeism requires taking a comprehensive, trauma-informed approach that starts with prevention and early intervention, including developing routines and trusting relationships that create a sense of belonging rather than responding with punitive action. Whereas taking attendance daily in a caring, consistent manner is essential to identify when students begin to miss too much school, and for engaging students and families as early as possible with needed support and resources. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Escambia County, Florida, does hereby recognize the month of September twenty twenty-four as Attendance Awareness Month, and calls upon schools, families, elected leaders, and other community partners to work together to identify and address barriers to being in school, and to engage students, families, and educators in working together to identify and remove barriers to getting to school, and develop meaningful solutions that ensure all children and youth keep learning despite today's many challenges. We hereby commit to focusing on reducing absenteeism and addressing the factors that cause students to miss school in order to ensure all children an equitable opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive academically, emotionally, and socially. We recognize that we must work together to build an engaging school environment that motivates attendance and sends the message and sends the message that learning can and must continue. We will work with our schools to analyze attendance, to monitor outcomes for different groups of students, raise public awareness, establish goals, allocate resources, track progress, and assure accountability for an equal opportunity to learn. Adopted this 20th day of August 2024.
I did want to say to the superintendent, I have seen the billboards around town that are targeting attendance, and so, good job. I think it's helpful to see that... The one I saw was, you know, missed two days in kindergarten, and by the time you've finished high school, it's a month or something, whatever it said, but it was good, goodly, well put. Okay, so we're down to the public forum for agenda items only. So if you had a form for this, it should be in by now. If you have a form for anything, it should be in by now before I call the first person. Seeing nobody moving forward. Tonight, I have one person who is here to speak to an agenda item. It is 16B. Mr. Larry Downs Jr., you have three minutes. As you're coming forward, I will remind you of the purpose of the agenda, and you're expected to be respectful in your address to the board. You're also asked to use titles and not individual names. Personal attacks against school board members, superintendent, or staff or employees will not be tolerated. Please direct your comments to me, the chair. Personal attacks against other speakers and outbursts during another speaker's time will also not be tolerated. If you fail to follow these guidelines, you will be warned by the chair, and the subject to removal of violations continue. So as I said, your three minutes, Ms. Odom's our timekeeper, our parliamentarian, Ms. Buswell's our timekeeper. Your time starts with your opening statement.
Okay, I feel special. I get the special lecture. Anyways, what I wanted to speak about was a little bit about the health. You know, and this here is about nurses and students, and you know, how some of them need some extra care. And, you know, and the the little, I guess it's a proclamation or a word, what's that thing called?
Resolution?
Yeah, resolution, on the childhood cancer rates, you know. I mean, they're going to need more, more and more treatment. You know, if you go to American Trades Association on YouTube, that's one of my channels, you'll see where I address this. It was on the news, it's on, you know, mainstream propaganda news, where there's way more young people getting cancer than there are your people your age. So, you know, I just put, you know, I just use a common denominator, which is, what have they received more of than you have? Childhood immunizations. That's just the reality. We've all been eating the same food. So I just didn't get all those childhood immunizations. So, you know, this is, I think this is directly related to health, you know. So I want everybody to know that you do not have to inject your child with chemical concoctions by Pfizer, Moderna, Lilly, AstraZeneca, et cetera, the pharmaceutical corporations, you don't have to. Then maybe they wouldn't need these nurses. You know, I'm just saying, there's some autism rates going through the roof. I know it's hard to listen to me, Chair, but I'm here to point out the obvious. Missionobvious.com is where you can go and find my trip to the Health Department, where they tell you you don't have to inject your little child to bring them to these schools. You know, that's very important. They should know. I've already encouraged a couple of Waffle House workers who are parents, and they said, oh, they went in and just got it. It was so easy. And yet, so many parents think that they have to. So, you know, let's stop it. Y'all go to missionobvious.com and look at me point out the obvious with some actual statistics and doctors. I did a video with Dr. Deborah Viglione, it'll be going on there tomorrow. She's from Gulf Breeze, she's a real deal. And maybe we could keep these children from needing personal care nurses and stuff if we quit giving them chemical concoctions. Missionobvious.com, over and out.
Thank you, Mr. Downs. I have no other speakers to agenda items. So we will move to the minutes, the adoption of the minutes. Making sure I'm in the right place. Okay. We have four sets of minutes to adopt tonight. The first is Item A, July 11th, Regular Workshop. Do I have a?
Move the adoption of July 11th.
My second.
Minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Slaton, thank you, Mr. Williams. Are there any corrections or deletions? Seeing none, please vote.
Approve five to zero.
Our next item is B, the July 16th Regular Meeting.
I'll move the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Slaton. Is there, are there any deletions or additions, corrections? Seeing none, please vote.
Approve five to zero.
Thank you. Next item, C, July 24th Special Meeting of the Board.
No move.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Fetsko, thank you, Mr. Williams. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, please vote.
Approve five to zero.
Thank you, in our final set of minutes.
Move the adoption of August 1st Special Meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Slaton, thank you, Mr. Adams. Additions, corrections, deletions? Seeing none, please vote.
Approve five to zero.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business, no administrative appointments, no proposed additions and revisions. But we do have three items for public hearing. I don't believe I have any forms specifically about the public hearing. So at this time, I would entertain a motion for 7A, the changes to Chapter 1. Thank you, Mr. Slaton.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Fetsko. Any discussion? Wait, is there anyone here to speak? Public hearing is closed. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, please vote.
Approve five to zero.
Item B is rule development on the Internet safety. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Is there anyone here to speak to the rule on Internet safety? Okay, do we, I don't think it's clear in our policy that you have to fill out a form for public hearing, is it? So if you've got a form and you want to come speak to the Internet safety and speak to the Internet safety?
It's a big circle, you know. It's a circle of Internet safety.
Well, this is a policy in particular that you need to be addressing the specific policy changes.
Yeah, yeah, well, the policy, I'm assuming, applies to Internet safety. Is that correct?
At school.
At school, yes.
But you haven't read it.
Have we got enough safety? Do we have enough? Can we get some more safety? If it'll just...
Have you read the policy to know what it says?
Have y'all read the policy?
Yes.
Because I don't answer questions. You know, that's part of my, that's part of my rights. I don't have to answer questions. But anyways, you know, that's one of the things that they should be teaching these children. Internet safety, I've seen y'all, you know, move this direction, you know, with different corporations helping you, different law firms, law firms, you know, trying to protect these kids from Internet. You know, I've been up here at those meetings. And, you know, wanting to sue the Internet, I guess. Facebook and everybody else. You know, there comes a time when there should be some personal responsibility.
And that's what this policy addresses.
Okay, so it puts it on the children to have some responsibility?
Yes.
All right. Y'all are moving in the right direction now. Now, I didn't read it, you know, if we would read all this, I'm sure we'd have a lot more to say, but we don't, we don't have a clue what y'all are voting on. I'm just hoping the two that I helped get elected read it. But I've seen senators pass stuff and not read it. That's a sad fact.
Thank you, Mr. Downs. And for the public to understand, our agenda is posted seven days or more ahead of the meeting with links to everything that we vote on, so that the public has the opportunity to review. This item has been out there for almost 60 days. So it's had ample opportunity for the public to have read it and had consideration of it. Anyone else for public hearing? Seeing nothing else, any discussion from the board? Seeing none, please vote.
Pass is five to zero.
Our last item for public hearing is the Student Progression Plan. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Thank you, Mr. Slaton, thank you, Mr. Adams. Is there anyone here to speak to the public hearing on the pupil progression plan? Is there any discussion from the board? Again, this has been out in the public arena for almost 60 days.
In Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just for the public, we have our workshops. We do a lot of discussion on some of these items. So tonight, you see, it's kind of moving a little fast because it's all been discussed either by us or with staff or the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. If there's no other discussion, please vote.
Pass is five to zero.
The next portion of our business meeting is the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Some move.
Your items eight through 42. Thank you, Mr. Fetsko, thank you, Mr. Adams. Are there any items to be pulled from the Consent Agenda? Curriculum, finance, human resources. Am I moving too fast? Let me down. Operations, Superintendent. So any discussion on the consent items, items A through eight for 42? Seeing none, if we're ready to vote, please vote.
Pass is five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. There are no items from the board. There are two items from the Superintendent. Item A is the Foundation's Board of Directors nominee. Escambia County Public Schools Foundation Board of Director nominees. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move the item.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, is there a second?
Second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Slaton, is there any discussion? If not, please vote.
Holly.
We got it. Yeah, we got it. I would say to those that were Board of Directors.
What I have, Ms. Hightower, is the consent. And we had the same issue last month. Holly, is it, is the, is item 44 still listed as like it would have been under the consent? Okay, so it's different? Okay. What's the result, Holly? Approve five to zero, thank you, ma'am.
And I want to say thank you to those who have agreed to serve on the Board of Directors for the foundation. They're a great partner for our public schools. All right. The next item is B, an Agreement for Legal Services. Is there a motion?
I'd like to move the superintendent's proposal.
And I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Slaton, thank you, Mr. Fetsko, any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Let me know how it comes out, Holly.
Approve five to zero.
Okay, moving on, we have items from the internal auditing. There is a, reports for 58 cost centers, is there a motion?
I'll move the approval of the motion for the inventory reports.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Fetsko, thank you, Mr. Adams. Is there any discussion? I'd just like to say, if you haven't reviewed the reports, we have a number of these schools with no findings of any missing materials or anything. So everyone is doing an amazing job of taking care of our materials and our facilities. So, no other discussion, please vote.
I'll need your help, Holly. Prove five to zero.
That is the end of our business portion of our meeting. We will now move to the public forum section. We'll do a brief reminder. This allows members of the public to address the board in any manner of education or administration of our schools. We are not compelled to answer questions or respond to you, and typically will not engage in back-and-forth dialogue in this venue. However, this board and superintendent will note your contact information for a response if appropriate. And I'd like to add there that we really, our phone numbers and our email addresses are on the website. And if you have any concerns, any of us would be happy to help you. As always, we invite you to contact us by phone or email, and our meeting times and locations for the meetings are on the website. And our meeting times and locations for the meetings are on the website. Speakers must adhere to the guidelines outlined in the policy and posted on the agenda. You're expected to be respectful in your address to the board. You're also asked to use titles and not individual names. Personal attacks against school board members, superintendent, staff, or employees will not be tolerated. And please direct your comments to the chair. As I indicated, personal attacks against other speakers and outbursts during another speaker's time will also not be tolerated. And if you fail to follow these guidelines, you will be warned by the chair and subject to removal if violations continue. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Ms. Oden will serve as the parliamentarian. Ms. Buswell is our timekeeper, timekeeper. And we'll start the timer with your opening remarks. The buzzer will sound when your time has elapsed. And I would ask you, that is, when the buzzer sounds, that you bring your comments to a close as quickly as possible. Our first speaker this evening is Ms. Alice Downs, and she has six minutes with time donated by Melissa Creel. Is Ms. Creel here? Um, our, our policy stipulates that they have, have to be in the room. So are you Kaylee Terrell? And it said that you had three minutes, so now you don't wish to speak. You're going to give your time to, to Ms. Downs. Okay. Good evening. Sorry, I'm just writing this down so I don't forget.
Ready?
I'm ready.
All right. Good evening. My name is Alice Downs. I'm a teacher here in Escambia County and have been for twenty-one plus years. I'm here to speak on behalf of myself and also of all the other teachers in our district. Immediately prior to our in-service week, prior to school starting, the district sent us an email stating we were switching exclusively, exclusively over to Canvas this year. We were abandoning Google Classroom and SchoolNet. Little did we know that that would be the single most frustrating activity we would do that week. Let me say, I'm not opposed to Canvas in theory. Nothing that gets introduced to us, however, the week before school should ever take so many hours of our time away from our classrooms and prepping our curriculum and instruction for our students. Nothing that is so complicated to learn should have a time limit of two weeks that we have to implement. Our training was so long that we didn't even get to hear anything. We were left to watch videos to figure out the rest of it. Nothing, no training should know what teachers in tears due to the complexity of the platform and the time they're missing out of the classroom. We had to personally add all of our subject areas to Canvas. Then we had to go back and make sure each subject area would sync with Focus. And if, by the way, we don't do this part just right, it's going to impact how our students' grades will show up in Focus. I'm sure nothing's going to go wrong there. Fifty teachers in a cafeteria all trying to keep up? No, I'm sure we won't have any errors there, and grades are going to post just fine when the nine weeks is up. Then we had to go back and make sure all the accommodations for our 504 and IEP students were fed into the system correctly. That's legal implications for us if we don't do it correctly. We have twenty-five students just in our fifth grade, um, grade level. That's twelve, twenty-five students times six subject areas clicking back and forth and back and forth. So many pages, so many clicks for each one, it was ridiculous. Then we have to go back and we have to add in on our tests into Canvas. That's seventeen science classes, seventeen units in science for both my science classes, fourteen for each of our math, and then twenty for our social studies. Back and forth ten to twelve times per click, per page, per subject, per kit. At some point, I closed my crumpet because I said, I'm done. I went and called my school board. I said, I'm walking out. I'm not even taking any of this stuff in the classroom with me. I'm taking my purse and I'm leaving. I have had it. I have had it with everything that this school district expects of us teachers. You pile more and more and more on our plate, and we are so sick and tired of it. When I started teaching twenty-one years ago, I went to school, I taught my subjects. We did everything we could. We filled out our little reports, and we were done, and we went home, and we enjoyed our families and our time. And we got a break, and we got to recharge for the next day. I have teachers working eight, nine, ten o'clock at night to get done what they need to get done. My husband, I know y'all are big fans of my husband, but he did say something super profound to me. He says, y'all keep getting this handed to you because you keep doing it. You keep doing it. You keep eating up everything they give you to do, and you keep doing it. And that's what's happening, again with Canvas. Again, I don't, I don't, I'm not whatever about Canvas. Y'all want us to put Canvas into place? Y'all set that up. Y'all had a whole summer to get this ready for us. I was told, hey, you know, y'all jumped on the bang wang, and at the end, all the other schools have been doing it all this time. Well, our leadership must not have understood the complexity of these project or this platform, or I don't think they would have thrown it on to us. And it wasn't just my school. It was multiple schools. Every single teacher I reached out to was having the exact same problem. I'm not putting anything in Canvas. Y'all want to put some stuff in Canvas? Y'all put it in. I am not going to be using this platform until I'm paid for my time to be sitting trained properly. Our trainers didn't even, weren't even able to train us properly to do this. It was ridiculous. You want us to put all this IEP and 504 stuff in there? I'm not going to be responsible if I don't put it in right. I'm not going to be responsible if it doesn't go into Focus right, and Focus jacks up in nine weeks. I'm not responsible for that. This is not my pay grade. This is not my job. You pay me to go and teach. I'm highly effective. I've been highly effective for twenty-one years, and almost everybody I know at my school has that status. And we are sick and tired. Seven and a half hours a day you pay me for. The words of appreciation that you give to us, we love that. But you know what? They're not enough. They're not enough. It's not enough that I miss time with my family week after week after week. Eight to ten hours a week extra I've been putting in. Eight to ten extra hours a week. That's like a free week of work y'all are getting from teachers. You know what one of my teachers said to me, one of our new, new teachers? I never knew it was going to be like this. This is, this is, this is very discouraging. I don't want to do this anymore. This isn't even fun. This isn't what I went to school with, school for. I said, I agree with you. We're going to get you through it. We'll be fine. This is what you need to do. And this is what I'm telling you I'm going to do. I'm going to put my students' needs first. You want proficiency to increase? I got you. I'm a damn good teacher, and so is everybody else I work with. But you are bogging us down to the point we can't even do what we need to do. We're so logged down, bogged down in paperwork and Canvas and reports and IEP meetings on our little breaks that we get every week, every day, thirty-five minutes? That's not a break. And it's not a break, even if it was a break, because we're stacked with RTI meetings, staff meetings, all the other means that we have to do for our school in general. That's not a break. We need time. We need time to do what you want us to do, which is increase proficiency. We can do that. Take all this garbage off our plate, give it to somebody else to do, because that's not what we were trained to do. That's not what we love to do. I wake up every day and just cannot wait to get to school and see my kids. And so do my other teacher friends. But you know what? This is the kinds of stuff that makes us say, never mind, I'm done. I'm going to go Plan B. My Plan B, food truck. Has nothing to do with education. I'll probably be miserable, but you know what? I'll be able to go see my family at night. I won't be working eight to ten extra hours a week. Y'all need to think about that. It's getting bad.
Thank you. Um, our next speaker is Larry Downs Jr. He has six minutes with time donated by Michael Bearden, Mr. Bearden.
All right. Let's roll. All right, uh, anyways, uh, yeah, I've been telling her that for years. Like, why, why do you, why, why do you give them all that time? You know, I talked with my, with my employees, and I said, look, I'm going to give y'all about eight and a half to nine hours of work a day, but I'm only going to pay you for seven and a half. I said, but I'm going to seal clap for you. I'm going to give y'all awards and certificates. Be worker of the week. I couldn't get one of them to do it. Not one of them would give me an extra hour, hour and a half a day. Not one of them. And, and what she's talking about, that's bull. That's bull. I hear her at home, on her laptop, doing her, you know, sending messages to, to parents while I'm, while, while we're supposed to be sitting there, you know, enjoying each other. It's, it's all the time. It's ridiculous. So anyways, let me just point out some obvious here from MissionObvious.com. This is amazing. You know, and of course, the safety issue. I mean, we are turning our schools into like, uh, you know, little camps, internment camps, you know, scaring the mess out of the kids, doing active shooter drills. It's kind of like whenever we were kids, you know, in the sixties and the seventies. Getting, they had, they scared us to death, put us under desks to, for, uh, nuclear bombs. You're going, we got to prepare you for nuclear bombs, so get under the desk for these drills. See how stupid that is? That was the stupidest thing I ever heard of in my life. I look back on it, I'm like, yeah, that's going to protect us from some nuclear bombs and fallout. This is the same thing. Y'all scaring these kids. And, and the actual percentage, the, the chances, you know, there's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred something public and private schools in this country. The odds, the odds of an active shooter going in to do that. I'm not talking about kids in the parking lot, you know. I'm not talking about gang stuff. I'm talking about active shooter like y'all think, where you got to lock up all the doors, and they got to push in a six-digit code to get in their room. You think they're going to be able to do that while an active shooter's coming down the hallway? Give me a break. They ain't getting into that classroom. They'd have a better chance of getting into it with a key. They're not going to punch those codes. But the, but the percentage is, for y'all to scare the mess out of these kids and make them do active shooter drills, it's zero point, zero, 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 zero one. That's the odds. I just did a quick, quick, I just did some math, just did some math. Divided the schools by the amount of active shooters we've had like Parkland. And, uh, it doesn't, it doesn't go up to that. Doesn't go up to that. Doesn't go up to the level that we need to scare these kids like that. It's just sad. And, and I know, you know, we live in a country where we've went from Patrick Henry, give me liberty or give me death, to if it'll save one life, give up all your liberty. Just one. You know, it's because of a few bad apples. Give up all your liberty. See something, say something. Turning our nation into a rat nation. Got neighbors calling, calling code enforcement on each other. It's just sick. It's sickening. Y'all know it. Everybody knows it. Now, this focus, I mean, not the, y'all use, uh, Google? What is it? Google, uh, and I wish I had a lot of time here. Google Classroom. Y'all know who owns Google? Got any idea? Ever heard of Vanguard? I mean, these are global conglomerates that are not, they're not our friends. They're manipulating the minds of children and grownups. You know, it's just like the COVID mask. It's ridiculous. Y'all know it. The Denmark mask study that was already out. The Cochrane Mass Review that was done in twenty-twenty-two. It's ridiculous. Y'all scared the mess out of these kids. Maybe not y'all in particular, but across this country. And lots of teachers right here were scared to death making their kids wear masks. It's ridiculous. Over a zero point, zero, zero, three chance of dying of COVID. And kids even had a less chance. It's just, it's, it's sick. I mean, I don't know where y'all going to get done with the seal clapping and the, you know, proclamations and the awards. You know, it, it just, it makes me sick to even see all this stuff. But anyways, let me, let me go and go over the, uh, it's just amazing. I wish to have more time. For every five tradesmen, let me, let me explain something to y'all. I seen the, the little award that was going on with the equipment, you know, teaching the kids to operate equipment. I don't know if y'all seen, but they, you know, they generally, they don't look like the, uh, you know, JFK's, uh, day of making strong men in the high schools. They just don't look like that. And they don't look like it in, in everyday life. You know, that's what we might already get back to is making men. For every five tradesmen that die or retire, we have two replacements. And they're probably half-assed. That's a problem. We have a lot of stuff that's depending on, uh, men to do the maintenance on these structures, the infrastructure, the buildings, the hospitals, the dental offices. I mean, if y'all, if, if, well, next time you go to the dental office, just look in, look underneath that chair. Y'all got any idea of the med gas, the back? MissionObvious.com. It's our modus operandi.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker is Paula Montgomery. Miss Montgomery has three minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
From Paula Montgomery.
You may need to pull that down just a little bit.
Can you hear me now?
Better, thank you.
The last time I spoke to y'all, I was talking about bullying and about how maybe what we need to do is focus on potential bullies and teach them empathy. And somebody after that said, how do you teach empathy? And so I'm going to tell you my thoughts on that subject. I'm not an expert, but I'll tell you my thoughts. In my experience, kids are born with an innate empathy. If you have a room full of babies and one starts crying, the others will hear that distress. And the next thing you know, you have a room full of babies crying. Empathetically, they have picked up on the distress. And in toddlers, if one of them is in distress, you look around the room and you see all their little faces are so concerned. That's empathy. So how do you encourage that and teach it to blossom? And one way is if a child is actually hurting another child and someone sees it, then what you do is you say, how would you feel if that were you? That's an easy question, but you need to demand an answer. It's not rhetorical. Make the child really think how it would feel. And another way to teach it would be to have books about people who are ostensibly different from the child who's reading the book, and yet they have the same sort of feelings and reactions. And so it touches their common humanity. And so that's my thoughts on it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Our next speaker is Sandy, uh, Stacy Sehak. Thank you for being helpful. She has three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Hi, I'm a eighth grade reading teacher here in Escambia County. Hello, Board and Superintendent. And I have an issue that I'd like to address regarding our cell phone policy in our district. So we know in our state, we now have a law from the governor that says cell phones are not allowed in school while they're on to, right, to disrupt. And to then go back to your individual districts. Our district policy is the individual principals get to decide. So in some schools, having the cell phone is like being late to class. And in other schools, like I will say at Ferry Pass Middle School, last year, factually, they implemented a very strict, wonderful plan for the phones. First time we see it, we take it, we put it in the vault in the front office, and then you come pick it up at the end of the school day. Second time, your parents come pick it up. Third time, it's a meeting where you discuss. It is a state law, right? And we don't have this. But in all of our middle schools, at Ferry Pass, they went from a C to a B in that one year that that cell phone policy was implemented. Now, I'm at a school that does not have such a cell phone policy. It is a constant problem. And I know, and I don't really mean this as a slight, even though all the books that have been taken out, boy, you guys have been on top of that. However, do you realize with a cell phone that kids can pull up any book they want? They can watch any kind of content they want? They can take pictures, videos of teachers, right, of fights, of other activities that they demonstrate and do on school campus, which all causes a whole big other part of problems. So I am literally asking, begging for your help to come up with a, a policy, a strict one, that we can implement in all the schools in Escambia County as soon as possible. This school, you would be great. Because again, and I agree with the Canvas and all the stuff, people are shoving stuff. We're doing this testing. We're doing this. We're doing that. And it's so overwhelming, and we have thirty-something kids in our classes, and yet we still have to worry and deal with the cell phone issue. And it takes four minor referrals for even administrator to look at the actual phone, to actually have a conversation. It's handled just the way it would be to chew gum in class. And I, I don't think that's right. And you guys have the power, and I'm begging you, imploring you, please, implement a strict school-wide policy that everyone must follow. Also, when children go from one school to the next, which we know happens quite a bit in our county, they will have that consistency. Teachers can do their jobs, and we don't have to worry so much about these other horrible things. We will all disagree about books, but we do not disagree that cell phones have no place in our school. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is. Our next speaker is Mickey Price, three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. Board members, superintendent, my name is Mickey Price. I'm a member of Marcus Point Baptist Church and a member of the men's group Micah 68. I spoke last month concerning the selection process for West Florida High School. The process lacks transparency. After years of having a second chance lottery, this year, the superintendent decided not to have one, and he owned it. I'll give you credit for that. West Florida High School will be at a disadvantage now in short students for this year and the years to come. I brought my granddaughter last, last time I spoke. So my granddaughter started her high school experience at Booker T. Washington High School. The school's overcrowded, between classes, it's wall-to-wall students, the lighting is inadequate, the AC doesn't work properly, it smells, the students have foul language, and the dress is sometimes inappropriate. But you know what? She's adapted. She's in band, and she's okay. She's adapted better than I have. My request is for the system to be revamped. After the first lottery, put students on a wait list and give them a number. If a student declines, then take the next student on the list. If you have to take in sophomores, take in sophomores to get the numbers up. This process must be fair and transparent. Leadership is correcting a mistake. As I always say, just do the next right thing. I pray you do. I'm not giving up hope. The door may have shut for my granddaughter. I'm now fighting for others. My granddaughter was accepted into Brown Barge on the first, not the first lottery, but after some students declined. So I know this can be done. As far as Washington goes, spend the money to fix the school. Those students deserve better. I challenge all of you to go to Booker T. Washington High School and walk the halls when the bell rings. You will be shocked, or maybe not. My daughter passed away in 2018, and I have adopted a nine-year-old and a six-year-old, and I've already got custody of the grand, my granddaughter I'm talking about. So I will fight for them as long as I can, as long as I'm able to, I will fight for them. I want them to get into the best school in Escambia County. If that's West Florida High School, that's what I'm going to fight for. But this system needs to be transparent, and I pray for y'all, and I hope you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melanie Eubanks. Melanie, Ms. Eubanks has three minutes.
Good evening, school board members, Superintendent Leonard and staff, and congratulations on the school grades this year. It had to be a combined effort of leadership, teachers, staff, parents, and students. These are countless, there's countless other variables that could have impacted this wonderful achievement, and I think it's good to hear from teachers what is going on there, and it's eye-opening. But I'm wondering, in the beginning of the process of cleaning up our media centers, if it has impacted this accomplishment of getting better schools. Months ago, I shared a saying, "First, we overlook evil; then we permit evil; then we legalize evil; then we promote evil; then we celebrate evil; then we persecute those who still call it evil." It is evident that there are school board members, leadership, teachers, parents, and community members that are no longer overlooking evil. We have seen firsthand the persecution of those who began to expose evil. I personally have seen those who spoke truth in this very room feel the weight of their words from those who oppose the facts. I ask you, how did we even know to call pornography sexually explicit contact, sexually deviant behavior evil? Because there is a standard, a standard of truth. I encourage the school board and district leadership to continue to stand for truth. Be a plumb line, if you will. Set the standard. The standard must be based upon absolutes. When truth is based upon emotions and feelings, confusion and deception follow. Truth can be known even in our schools. We need media specialists and leadership who practice due diligence to safeguard our children's innocent, and that's limiting their phones at school too, obviously. It must be deliberate. Please continue to be intentional about erring on the side of caution. Please continue to stand on truth. Thank you for taking the initiative to be proactive. Thank you for thinking about positive or negative consequences of the choices that you make and how they not only affect the students in the classroom, but how they affect our students, affect the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eubanks. Our final speaker tonight is Julie Patton. Ms. Patton, you have three minutes.
I came tonight to express my continuing concern about the issue with the removal of the books. I think that one of the major problems we have in our society right now is that we have a divide between what some people consider evil, what others consider freedom, what is an appropriate area of choice for kids, and all the rest of it. I am encouraged to know that we're moving along now with the community standards issue in terms of review of books. That, that will be a good thing, I think, because I think that what we need to do at this point is really respect the standards that we have in this country about what is individual choice, what is individual religion, and what is something that should be observed and respected by everybody, because we all have different ideas about that. I, I was thinking about my own Christianity, and I contrast it with the Christianity that I hear discussed here, and it's just very, very different. And I'm not alone in believing what I believe and pursuing what I pursue. In that regard, I was disturbed to hear that once again, we're not following the procedures that actually are written down about who gets to do what. I think that one of the people who's been very involved in removing books has requested again this month that two new books be added to the list of hundreds, thousands of books that are being held at this point. I understand that she, that there is an issue of a power of attorney over one child that makes her a parent in this county, but it doesn't make her a parent. Maybe guardianship would. And I think that it's almost like flaunting the idea that a person who's not a parent, just a community member, can suggest one book a month for removal, when this month it's two for her. A couple of months ago, it was four for her. And I just think that we need to move along fairly here, not with a lot of tricks and subterfuges about who's, what the rules are for different people. So bring the books back and...
Thank you, Ms. Patton. Mr. Superintendent, did you want to address anything?
No. What I'll do is just like I did last month, those individuals that I need to make sure I talk to, I call them individually. There were a couple, I didn't get the last teacher that was from another middle school. I got the first name, I think it was Stacy, so I'll make sure I get the last name from Holly. But either myself, if you're talking about Canvas, either myself or Mr. Wilson, will either contact you via the phone, or I'll try to do everything I can to come see you. I know where you work, Ms. Downs, so I could come out there and visit. And I appreciate it, citizens, and I certainly appreciate employees stating their case. But just like Mr. Mickey said, I'll, I'll call you, and if it's my fault, I'll own it, and if it's not my fault, I'll own it then too, because that's what you're supposed to do. But we'll get to where we need to be. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the board? Thank you to all for the good opening of school. All right. If there's nothing else, and there's no objection, we are adjourned.